We'll call this meeting the Art of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for November 29th, 2022. Roll call, Mr. Veder.
Leyland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Chelka.
Here.
White.
Here. Have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions of the day. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Have the agenda received as proposed or as amended?
All moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on any of the items? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, public comments? Anyone from the public like to make public comments? Seeing none here. Any online? Hearing none, we'll move on to claims and payments. Michelle?
Good morning. This week, we have several, just a few larger purchases. Polygraph chair that was purchased by the Sheriff's Department. And we have the land purchase for conservation for eighty-nine thousand eight hundred fifty-nine dollars and eleven cents. That was the Turkey Ridge Wildlife Area. And then we paid interest on our bonds. And the total of that was one hundred six thousand three hundred fifty dollars. And then solid waste also, we paid some on behalf of them at sixty thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. So total bill payment this week is three hundred sixty-three thousand eight hundred dollars and seventy-one cents. We also paid two thousand six hundred eighty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents from the Sheriff's Special Fund.
Thank you, Michelle.
Everything appears to be in order. Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, this is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chelka.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a presentation, UCC legislative priorities for 2023 presented by Larry Murphy and Gary Grant.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, everyone. Let me move over here a little bit. Thank you all for having us this morning. My name is Gary Grant. I am one of the lobbyists for the Urban County Coalition. My immediate right is Larry Murphy. He's one of your other lobbyists for the Urban County Coalition. I want to, I don't want to take up too much of your time. I'm happy to entertain any questions that you have on any of these priorities. We just want to familiarize you with some of these. Some of these you have seen before, but I want to cover kind of more in-depth some of the ones that are brand new this year that we're putting on our priority list. We probably, I probably won't cover all of these, but if you have questions on any specific ones, I'm happy to go into detail. The new, the new ones this year, you'll find on, on the first page, and they're, they're a little more lengthy than we generally allow priorities to be, but these are fairly important. And these have to do with the, the first one is the local option sales tax and the Iowa Water and Land Legacy Fund. As you all remember from last year, kind of in, in the later part of the session, there were some legislative proposals that proposed kind of an innovative new way to activate the Iowa Water and Land Legacy Fund. And as you all remember, that's a constitutional amendment that says the next time that the sales tax is raised, the three-eighths of a cent will go into the Iowa Water and Land Legacy Fund to be spent on kind of a formula of things that is the subject of some debate at the legislature. Because while it appears that while the, the, the method of funding, and that is the three-eighths of a cent from the sales tax, is constitutionally protected, the formula on how that money is dispersed from the Iowa Water and Land Legacy Fund is not. So that is subject to legislative change. The proposals, in a nutshell, there are currently in about twenty-one jurisdictions in Iowa that do not have a local option sales tax. That, and some of the larger ones are like, I think Iowa City and Coralville, Johnson County doesn't have a, a local option sales tax. So in jurisdictions that don't have one, under the proposals, this, the twenty-one jurisdictions, I believe, they, they would all be required, they'd all have a, a sales tax imposed on them. And then this would all be scooped into a, a fund at the state, much like the Save Penny was for schools many years ago, that it was converted to a statewide sales tax, and then distributed to, back out to the areas that collected it. There would, some of the proposals would, would require a dispersment of the three-eighths of a cent, and then that fund, any shortfall in the fund would be backfilled from State General Fund. And so I'm sure you can imagine, the Urban County Coalition and as your lobbyists, we were a little uncomfortable with any proposal that required the state to make a commitment to backfill a fund. You've kind of been through that in recent years. We weren't sure how long that would go on, number one, because the, that, the, while the Iowa Water and Land Legacy Fund is constitutionally protected, any backfill to any sort of statewide sales tax pool is not. We were also concerned about the methodology of kind of dispersing this money being subject to sort of future legislative tinkering, because as we all know, that there are certain areas of the state that are growing and, and some areas that aren't. We were concerned that the areas that were growing, mainly the ones in the Urban County Coalition, may find themselves either in the near future or in the distant future, subject to a fairness argument about people driving in from, you know, shop, people driving in from other counties to shop in Waterloo or Cedar Falls, and that it wouldn't be technically fair that their communities wouldn't be beneficiaries of the sales tax. So, you know, removing, you know, some of Blackhawk County's potential sales tax revenues to more fair or equitably distribute that, I think is, and should be a concern. So what we're, we're oppose, we're, we're opposing sort of any efforts to scoop local option sales taxes into a statewide fund for redistribution. Is kind of in a nutshell what these three paragraphs here indicate. We still do support the state sort of funding the Iowa Water and Land Legacy Fund. That's not something that, you know, we're taking a position in opposition to. We're simply taking, we're simply opposing this particular methodology of funding it. So.
And candidly, this last session, when this idea was floated, and again, it's basically reaching into all of you all that have passed local options sales tax with revenue purpose statements and scooping that money statewide and theoretically redistributed. We took a position against it at your direction last year. And the only two groups that were opposed to it, where it probably would have passed, was Farm Bureau and the Urban County Coalition, even though many other groups were opposed to it, but they were concerned about being publicly opposed, this sort of thing. And so we were able to stop it. And so it kind of segues into the next issue that Gary's going to talk about in terms of property tax, because obviously property tax plays into the wheelhouse for Farm Bureau. And so the folks that are pushing this idea at the state level are trying to figure out a way, how do we peel Farm Bureau off on, on this issue? So why don't you go ahead and just explain?
Well, and, and, and one of the, the things I would encourage you as you're sort of talking to conservation groups, because this particular, this particular approach has been supported by a majority of the conservation groups across the state. And as you're talking to conservation groups, I would encourage you to sort of remind them that we're not opposed to the Iowa, to funding the Iowa Water and Land Legacy, not, not as an Urban County Coalition. That, that's not what this, what this indicates. We're simply opposed to the, this particular methodology of funding it. We don't, we also don't believe that as, as a coalition, that the way that some of the funding was proposed through the Iowa Water and Land Legacy Funding was particularly beneficial or as beneficial to the conservation groups as they seem to believe. What I think is the, what I, what I believe is the thinking of a great deal of, a number of the conservation groups is that they don't, they aren't concerned as much about how those funds are distributed at first, that the biggest hurdle is actually the three, you know, passing a, an increase in the sales tax. And they're, they're not wrong. There's, there's, there's some justification for that. However, one of the things I like to remind them when I talk to conservation folks is that it's, once you lock down, once you lock in a funding formula at any government level, it becomes more difficult to change it than you might imagine. So. All right. The next, our, our next sort of big priority is property taxes. And there, there, the overwhelming sort of issue that we're hearing is that the candidates at the doors were, claimed they were hearing from everyone about property taxes, that property taxes are just too high. So we are, as an Urban County Coalition, have taken the stance that while we're not opposed to sort of engaging with the state to talk about property taxes, that that's going to have to be a larger discussion than placing limits on local governments about what they can and can't spend and what, how much property taxes can or can't go up. That we're, number one, we're not the only taxing jurisdiction, we being local governments aren't the only taxing jurisdictions on the property tax bill. And we think any sort of property tax discussion is going to have to be holistic, not only about how those property taxes are generated amongst all of the taxing jurisdictions, but it's also going to have to include frankly, some of, you know, one of our, one of our lower down priorities is going to have to be, they're going to have to talk about unfunded mandates and pushing responsibilities off onto local governments that end up costing property taxpayers money. And some of the things that, you know, we're talking about, you know, you know, fees for, you know, recorder services, fees for treasurer services, you know, the one that we like to use that's fairly easy is the marriage license. You know, the, the, it's county employees that help fill them out, it's county employees that, you know, that, that store them and that, that do searches for them, but in the thirty-five dollars that, that the state allows you to charge, we get to keep five, and the state, thirty goes into the general fund. You know, anything that the state, and you, you all, we, we know you all know this, but we would encourage you to remind sort of some of your local legislators that everything that the state requires you as county supervisors to do that isn't covered by an adequate fee has to be supplemented with property taxes. That money has to come from somewhere. So that's what we will be reminding them as we go forward. The last one I just want to, the last one I just want to cover is mental health funding, and this will be on there probably until we get some of the, the kinks worked out of this. We, we know workforce, workforce challenges continue to be sort of problematic within mental health regions, and a big reason for that is rates. Another one is we need to make sure that rather than the five percent currently, we're asking for the state to allow mental health regions to maintain a ten percent fund balance to allow for the timely payment of bills, because we know that mental health regions sometimes engage small providers, and they really can't sort of tolerate delays in payments. And while the state has a year of track record, and they haven't been late on payment, they've only been late on payments once, but we can, we think that this will probably be kind of a reoccurring problem because of the way that the state budgets, that the beginning of the fiscal year payment will always be late because the state, the DHS is not, not allowed to sort of expend that money until July 1st. So while the rest of the payments are generally made about two weeks early, that payment is always going to be two to three weeks late. And we think that a ten percent fund balance is probably the minimum you need to sort of for, you know, for cash flow purposes. Beyond that, I think most of these are priorities that you, you all have seen before that we'll continue to work on. So at this point, any questions, comments?
I was just going to ask if you'd comment. It was up until, I mean, we thought we had legislative priorities set, and then in the last month or so, we took a look at the wage theft.
Yes.
Addition to that, I just, and that was something I wasn't familiar with, and I don't know if everybody else is, but if you could just touch on that, why that became?
Yes. I'm sorry, we, that, that's just another new one. The, we were, we thought we had our priorities settled. We, we came up with two issues. There was a little bit of a disagreement on the ten percent versus fifteen percent for mental health fund balance. We, as a coalition, decided to adjust that to ten percent, because that seemed to be the feeling of like the regional CEOs. The last issue that we, we did add was an issue called wage theft. And this is, this is an issue where employee, employers may not pay a promised wage to an employee, and that's some, there, there is some concern about cuts to, that the state has made recently, and that now that they, now they, the state only have two wage theft investigators, I think at the Department of Labor for a state of about three and a half million people. And consequently, some of these, there are some of our urban counties that have engaged sort of private not-for-profits in this, and that's, that's certainly a cost. And this does sort of, it's, 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 some of our counties surmise that because that this, this typically happens to folks that are on the lower end of the wage scale, that this could have, this could and is having an impact on like general relief applications, so that we're asking that the state eliminate the sixty-five hundred dollar cap on, it seems to be a rather arbitrary cap on, 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 on wage theft, number one, and number two, sort of reinstate some of the invest, wage theft investigators that have been subject to be, you know, a reduction in force kind of over the last, last several years. So that's another one of the issues that we've added in this, for this go-around.
And inclusion, again, thank you for being part of the Urban County Coalition. And you all know this already, but I share, this is a chance for your constituents to understand why Blackhawk County is part of the Coalition of Johnson, Lynn, and Scott and Dubuque County. And again, looking back over the last probably thirty-five years, with the consolidation of state agencies, eventually primarily in the urban counties, you all in the urban county areas are confronted with issues that are unique to the situation you have, providing those services, even though you provide them statewide to a lot of rural counties, the cost comes into the urban counties. So probably about ten, twelve years ago, you all helped to put together this coalition. And that's why we do it, because you do have unique issues that are not necessarily represented by the Association of Counties, because sometimes there's conflict between what your needs are and the other rural counties. So we want to thank you for your support on it, and certainly glad to answer any questions.
One of my concerns is with the mental health stuff, is there's not, not enough money there to begin with. You know, there's a lot of people being not underserved and not even being served.
Right.
And the other issue is, I said, I'm a volunteer ombudsman for one of the nursing homes here in town. The number of people that are in nursing homes that are being neglected and aren't being taken care of to the level they should be.
Mm-hmm.
You know, there's not enough workers. I was in, in the, when I served recently, and there was a young girl helping one of the clients in there, and it was amazing, she's just come here from Africa about four years ago, and she has a wonderful work ethic. She was taking care of those people, you know, as fast as she could, and yet there's people that aren't being taken care of, and there's not enough help there to begin with. And they're, they're working long hours and they're getting stressed out, so we got to do something about that, too.
Yeah. And actually, so much of that comes right back into some of the things we're talking about in terms of the wages that are paid, you know, employee recruitment. Going to, Craig, going to the mental health that you're raising, I think one of the points you're making, and it's valid, is back, the last time you really had a, in essence, full funding of mental health was in nineteen ninety-six. And then that level of funding at the county level was frozen. It's not been increased, and even though the state's picking up the cost of mental health, what they're doing is using that ninety-seven, ninety-eight million dollar figure that's twenty-five years old as, well, we're fully funding mental health, and you all know that there's a lot of folks that are not being served or, in terms of access. I mean, that's why they regionalized the mental health services, and that has been, you know, good in terms of access. But the reality is, the funding of mental health should be substantially increased to deal with some of the issues you're talking about.
And that's where Will come in, I think, too, as we see services that are needed for the people. He's talking about the counties, the locals will end up having to meet that.
Yes. Well, and, and now with, now with the state sort of, I don't like to phrase it like this, but for lack of a better term, the state takeover of mental health services, at least the funding, I think one of the things that is a constant battle in this area for the Urban County Coalition is making sure that the rates that, that Medicaid is reimbursing for some of these services are sustainable, because it, that goes back to work, some of the workforce challenges that we're having. And frankly, I'll, I'll tell you that, and I'm sure you, you alluded to this, the challenge now seems to be more workforce than funding. So, and I know that there, there are some cart and horse kind of issues there, is that, you know, could you attract, could you attract more workers if you increase rates, therefore increase pay? There is some truth in that. One of the things that, you know, that's not unique to mental health services, though, is they're having as much trouble recruiting, just simply recruiting workers as anyone else. So I think they're, the workforce, it's approaching a crisis in Iowa, I think, is, is something that's going to, that's going to be difficult on many industries, but mental health certainly among them.
You know, to just make the problem worse.
Absolutely.
Yep. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And I apologize really for not putting this on as an agenda item to approve our legislative priorities, but we'll try to do that next week if that works for everybody then, too.
Glad you're right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day. Next is received project updates from department heads and elected officials. Good morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. The National Weather Service is predicting possible light rain this morning, possibly changing over to a snow-rain mix. Our snowplow crews will be out as needed till three o'clock for sure. If it is needed, they will be out on the roads until 5:00 PM. And then Eagle Road is partially closed right now, just east of Highway 21. We've been working on a covert extension project. We are hoping to get that completed by the end of the week, so then Eagle Road should be completely open.
Can you let us know when that happens, when it's reopened?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I answer any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other department heads or elected officials? Good morning, Mike.
Good morning, Board. Mike Hendrickson, Director of County Conservation. About a month ago, I came up here, I talked about our fundraisers in the fall. Fall's a big time for us as far as fundraisers go. We're winding those things down, and, but there are a couple of exciting events coming up, beginning Saturday. We have our Woodland Wonderland at Hartman Reserve Nature Center. It will be Saturday, December the third, and then Saturday, December the tenth, two days. There are still spots open, so the little ones should love it. There will be a live, a live reindeer there for pictures and things, lots to see, lots of Christmas trees decorated within the building. So it's going to, it's just a great atmosphere, and, and so the next two Saturdays, beginning at four o'clock, and again, you can go online and make a reservation for your little ones if you'd like, and it'll be a, a great event. And then, beginning Friday night, our Holiday Light Show will begin at Hickory Hills. They're putting the final touches on it this week. It's probably ninety-nine percent ready to go, and they're checking a few things out. That will go each Friday, Saturday, and Sunday through the month of December. We will end on Christmas Eve from six o'clock to nine o'clock each night. So I got a little preview of it last night. It looks really, really good. So anyway, just those two things. Thank you.
Good morning, Amanda.
Good morning. Amanda, HR Director. I just want to let you know I had our first meeting with our consultants for the Compensation and Classification Study. They are asking that I put together a small team to meet on December 21st, and that team include one to two board members and three to four key department heads or other elected officials, and then the HR staff. So I'm going to be sending you all some information on that, but I will be looking for two volunteers from the board. And then I've also talked about including our finance director, our auditor, as well as our conservation director as part of that team. So they will be here in January to roll out everything for the questionnaires and the information to staff and the board. But that's all I've got for right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone online? Yolando, you got any updates?
Good morning, Mr. White and the Board. Yeah, I'm just listening in. I'll provide an update next Tuesday.
Okay.
In particular, we're still wrapping up some things that we've, we've done for the month of November, and we're just putting some final touches on it, Thanksgiving meals and things of that nature, and I'll brief that next week if you don't mind, sir.
Sounds good, Yolando. Thank you. Any other department heads? Hearing none, we'll move on to minutes approved for November 22nd, 2022. So moved?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Consent agenda by resolution?
All moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion on any of the items? Hearing none, this is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yeah.
Chelka.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is reports, updates from Ben Delagardell, doing business as Urban Services. Morning, Ben.
Morning, Board. Nice to see you. Ben Delagardell, Urban Services LLC, updating Washburn Wastewater System for November. We've had a routine month in November. We just ended our fall discharge on Saturday. We moved into our equalization phase, which takes ten to fourteen days. It was a quiet month for service calls. I always like to knock on the desk when we say that, but overall, we're still maintaining under a three service call per month average. As you remember, I had some extraordinary samples from this past month that applied to our permit application for next year. Got those results back. They appeared normal, no cause for alarm with those, so our permits should move forward as expected. I was wondering if there was, I don't have an update on the oil and grease issue on the Port Road. Was there any action on your side of things? I haven't talked to Rory yet, so I think I'm going to need to take, I mean, need to take some time to get ahold of him.
We'll have Rory call you.
Okay. I can also give him a call, too.
He's back here.
Okay, that's no problem.
He's busy right now.
That's no problem. The last thing I wanted to mention was that I will be sending you contract update information this week. I've been working diligently on that and prepared to send that by Thursday, hopefully. My goal is to have something new in place by January 1st. That will give us thirty days to review and consider the changes, take action if you need, need to. I will be also including county attorney and finance director in this, so that they can also review those changes. And I will also, after you receive that, I'll be available for questions, comments, concerns. So that's all I've got for now. Do you have any questions that I can answer?
Any questions?
All right, now.
Chris, Tom, questions?
Have you had any, you have been reporting, has there been any Iowa First Swan calls that you've been doing?
Um, November, I may have had a couple, but yeah, we, we usually do seventy-five to eighty of those a year, and it slows down, of course, when the weather gets colder. But January is usually the lowest, you know, the lowest month. We don't normally have locates, but yeah, we, we average ten a month sometimes during the summer, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ben. Have a good holidays.
You, too, thank you.
Contracts and agreements, this is a resolution at the statement of completion and final acceptance of work for Project LFM 5008 7X07, paving on Grundy Road be approved and direct the chair to sign for saying, and authorized and direct the auditor to make final payment in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. In the total project cost of three million, four hundred ninety-two thousand, four hundred thirty-one dollars and forty-one cents, as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer.
All move.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathy?
Yeah, this is the grading on Grundy Road project, not the paving project. So this was completed, obviously, in 2021 at the end of the year. The grading work, the final closed, project closeout, we have just completed that because we were waiting on some paperwork from PCI, but I, usually at this stage, I show you some photos, but I showed you some photos of the paving project several weeks ago. Some of you were at the ribbon cutting, so obviously the grading project was successfully completed. ribbon cutting, so obviously, the grading project was successfully completed, we only overran by two percent, or about seventy-five thousand dollars, a portion of that overrun was due to extra water being needed to keep the dust down in twenty-twenty-one, it was very dusty that summer. Other than that, it, the project went off very well and allowed us to pave the road this summer, so I would recommend that you accept the project, and we be allowed to release the retainage.
Thank you, Kathy. I have a motion and a second on the floor, any further discussion? Hearing none, this is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is other business, this is a motion at the personnel requisition for a property tax supervisor, full-time replacement with a start date no sooner than January third, twenty-twenty-two, and the treasurer's office be approved, and it was recommended by Rita Schmidt, county treasurer.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved in seconded, Rita, anything you wanna add to that? Okay. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Next, a resolution at the minor plat of survey submitted by Chad and Tricia Brown, to minor plat four-point-six-four acres located at north of eight-oh-nine North Holgate Road in order to construct one new single-family home.
So moved.
Second.
Floor is yours.
Okay, all right, yeah, we have a request by Josh and Tricia Brown to plat four-point-six-four acres in order to construct a new single-family home at north of eight-zero-nine North Holgate There we go. Yeah, it was moved by Shaver and seconded by Bozer to approve the request by Josh and Tricia Brown to plat four-point-six-four acres in order to construct a new single-family home, the request was unanimously approved, the four-point-six-four acres in question is located north of eight-zero-nine Holgate Road, which is approximately five hundred feet west of the north Holgate Road in New Old Street intersection, the one parcel containing the four-point-six-four acres, the proposed minor plat area had two-point-eight-six acres rezoned from agricultural district to AR residential, with the Planning and Zoning Commission recommending approval at their September twenty-twenty meeting, and the Board of Supervisors approving the rezon at their October eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two meeting. The, the surrounding area consists of agricultural lands with rural homes and a zoned agricultural district to the north, south, east, and west, none of the plat areas located in a special flood hazard area, the applicant wishes to plat four-point-six-four acres in order to construct a new single-family home, parcel is large enough to accommodate one developed lot that will meet the size requirements for the AR agricultural district by being more than one-point-five acres in size and wider than a hundred fifty feet. The technical review committee did not have any concerns regarding this request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, this is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Chalka.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yeah.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, a resolution at the minor plat of survey submitted by Mike and Tracy Gensler, to minor plat one-point-nine-two acres located at west of twelve-eight-oh-six Wellman Road in order to construct one new single-family home.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded, Seth, you're up.
Okay, all right, basically, it was a request by Mike and Tracy Gensler to plat one-point-nine-two acres in order to construct a new single-family homes, the one-point-nine-two acres in question is located west of twelve-eight-oh-six Wellman Road, and it was moved by AG and seconded by shares to approve the request by Mike and Tracy Gensler to plat one-point-nine-two acres in order to construct a new single-family home, the request was unanimously approved, the one parcel containing the one-point-nine-two acres of proposed minor plat area had one-point-seven acres rezoned from a agricultural district to AR with the Planning and Zoning Commission recommending approval at their regular meeting on September twentieth, and the Board of Supervisors approved the rezon at their October eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two meeting. The plat area is designated as agricultural, and the future land use map, a component of the Black Hawk County Comprehensive Land Use Plans, surrounding is designated as agriculture to the north, land of the south is designated as parks and open space, land of the east and west is designated as agricultural district and parks and open space, the applicant wishes to plat one-point-two acres in order to construct a new single-family home, the parcel is large enough to accommodate one developed lot that will meet the lot and size requirements for the AR by being greater than one-point-five acres in size, the technical review committee did not have any concerns regarding the request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Hearing none, this is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, the motion to Director County Auditor, it's advertised for a public hearing to be held at nine-oh-five Tuesday, December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two, in Boardroom two-oh-one of Black Hawk County Courthouse, on a proposed ordinance number seventy-seven-dash-two-seven-three from a request submitted by Brad Boswell at east of sixty-two-twenty-five Ford Road to rezon six acres for agricultural to build the three new single-family homes.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, the motion to direct, or hold it, it is very delicate, this is a motion to training request submitted by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer, be approved, and Director Chair to sign for same, two-thousand-one-hundred-ninety-five dollars to attend the twenty-twenty-three National Association, Association of County Engineers Annual Conference from April sixteenth to the nineteenth.
So moved.
Moved in seconded, Kathy?
Yeah, the Iowa County Engineers Association, we are a hundred percent state, all of the counties are members of NACE, so we are, believe, we are very much committed to supporting the National Association of County Engineers, NACE. As the past president of ICA, I would like to attend, I believe it does afford us opportunities to network with our peers, find out new technologies, and it offers me a chance to get continuing educations, I'm on one of the subcommittees of NACE, the Payment, Preventative Maintenance Subcommittee, so I would like to, the opportunity to attend next April, and by approving it now, I can make my travel arrangements.
Where is it?
It's in Orange Beach, Alabama.
I was just curious.
Any other questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, a motion to training request submitted by Michelle Widener, Finance Director, be approved, and Director Chair to sign for same of a hundred and eighty dollars to attend the Virtual Twenty-Twenty-Two Government Finance Officers Association Generally Accepted Accounting Principles, update December eighth at twenty-twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any discussion on this item? Michelle, anything you wanna say?
Anyone's welcome to join me, it's so exciting, government accounting.
This is something you do annually?
It is, it's something I need to keep my license current, and these, seriously, this very much affects our audit every year, so I need to have that knowledge and keep current on it.
Sounds good.
Kathy didn't invite anybody to go with her, because I assume Alabama's pretty nice in April.
Not a virtual, no. Well, mine's just in my office.
Yeah.
Hearing no further questions, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. This is a motion for a travel request approved, and Director Chair to sign for same, for Tavis Hall, attend the twenty-twenty-three ISAC New County Officer School in West Des Moines, scheduled for January seventeenth and eighteenth, with a cost not to exceed five hundred dollars.
So moved.
So moved in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, a resolution because electronic media and output generated by such and communicated by employee using email messaging, word processing, utility programs, spreadsheets, faxes, voicemail, telephones, internet, et cetera, is the sole property of the Black Hawk County, effective immediately, all email will be archived by the IT department for a one-year period utilizing the county's email system.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any discussion on this item? Hearing none, this is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yeah.
Chalka.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a resolution to approve the IT servers project with an estimated cost of twenty-five thousand dollars to be paid with ARPA money. Al?
So moved.
Morning, Board. Al, you IT director, these servers are for security permissions, and they handle user logins, and we will place them at three separate locations throughout the county for redundancy. Can I answer any questions?
They qualified for ARPA funding, and how is that?
They, they qualify because they, well, with, it's kind of like...
It's all getting real technical.
Yeah, sorry. Like the cart and the horse, they, they, they do the authentication, and without the authentication, you basically can't use your computer.
Thanks for staying on top of this stuff, Al.
Yeah, great. Did you have anything to add to that, Mike? I was gonna say, which category, I guess I'm thinking of like, as far as this project doesn't have lost revenue, I guess I have to...
I believe, this isn't lost revenue, I believe it was a, I believe it's level four, I don't have the sheet in front of me right now on this one, but the, the, part of the reasoning for it was the fact, and Al, if I don't get this right, correct me, my understanding is this will aid in ability to work remotely.
Correct.
And, and part of the reason for that is because it also aids in the security, like, these are more secure as servers than what we're currently set up with.
Yeah, the, these are domain controllers, so we currently have three domain controllers, all three of them are currently on premises, best practice, you want to spread them out to different locations, so if this one goes down, you have another one at a different location, without these servers, you can't authenticate, you can't use your computers, so it's, they're, they're necessary.
Thanks again, Al.
Thank you.
Hearing no further questions, this is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
And did we get a second on that?
Second.
I thought you, them two guys.
I think so.
Go ahead.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Is there any reports or information from the Board? Hearing none, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.